Welcome everyone to our regular Cod Board meeting on April 20th at 6:00 PM in the Estill County Board of Education. I'd like to at this time call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone and we would like to start by saying our pledge. Do I have a boy, a young boy or a girl that would like to come up and lead us in our pledge? Someone come on up and lead us in our pledge.
We've got some students there coming up.
Come on up.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind everyone there's a sign-in sheet as you come into the door if you'd like to sign in. Mr. Saylor, do we have any revisions to this agenda?
There has been revisions since the original was sent to you all, but it's been posted well over 48 hours since the last revision was made. So I guess my answer to that would be no.
Thank you for that. At this time on our agenda, we have our Mountain Movers. Mr. Saylor, would you like to, we don't have a student rep here today, so would you like to...
Abby is, she is at Western with student orientation today. So we will go ahead and do it and get our Mountain Movers recognized this month. So let's start with our certified, I'm sorry, our classified Mountain Mover, I believe.
Get all the paperwork together now.
I'm trying to get them all together. I've mixed them up earlier. So our classified Mountain Mover this month is Ms. Patty Barnes. Is Patty with us?
Yes.
There she is. Patty is an MSD instructional assistant at Estill Springs. This is Patty's 19th year with the district. She's worked at South Urban, West Urban, and Estill Springs. Patty says the best thing about her job is sharing her love with the kids. She said that she loves them and they love her, and that's what matters.
That's what matters.
And Patty, we're so thankful for you. And as part of the Mountain Movers, you get your certificate and Backstreet Grub is our sponsor, so you've got a card from them. And also I would like to present you with the Medal of Excellence. If we can agree to the picture.
Of course.
We appreciate you very much.
She has her wonderful family here with her this evening too. I see Sarah, Lucas, and her husband.
And today's Lucas's birthday.
And you all have reason to be proud.
And today's Lucas's birthday.
Hey, don't share that medal with them. Okay, then let's go to our certified Mountain Mover, and that's Ms. Jessica McQueen.
Mr. Saylor, I don't think she's here. She... She wanted to be here, but there's something happened that she couldn't do.
I guess I'm going back to... Okay, let me go ahead and read it into the record. Ms. McQueen, Jessica is the MSD Special Education Teacher at Estill County High School. Jessica began her career at the high school in December of 2020. Jessica says that she loves to see when her students have worked hard and accomplished tasks and goals they have set for themselves. The best feeling is seeing how proud they are of their work. And it takes special people to work in those MSD Special Education classes. So we're very appreciative of Jessica. And no, I won't go to the Backstreet Grub. I'll say it for her. We are also very pleased tonight to represent, or to recognize, our community Mountain Mover. And our community Mountain Mover for this month is God's Outreach Food Bank. And I think Mandy is here with us. And I'll ask Mandy to come up and I'll read from the, her information. God's Outreach Food Bank Backpack Program again in 2008 when an elementary school passed out from being going without food all weekend. Estill County children in need are confidentially identified with their teachers and other school staff to receive a backpack with easy-to-prepare, kid-friendly foods such as raviolis, six-toe meal, cheese crackers, cereal bars, cereal, popcorn, ramen, and other foods to make meals for the weekend. Currently, they serve five Estill County schools in the program and distribute over 650 backpacks a month. So it is a great service to us. And Mandy, we are very appreciative of what y'all do. So here's a certificate. And I would like to present you all with a Medal of Excellence as well. We appreciate God's Outreach, and we have been blessed to be able to use Estill funding to support this program. I know earlier this fall, they were really in a bind and they were wondering, God's going to provide. And at that time, we were able to use Estill funds to provide funding for the program. And God sent you at the time. And we're glad to do it because this money goes to support our kids and our families. And Lord knows he's wanting that right now. So we're very appreciative of you. Thank you very much. And that's it for our Mountain Movers.
Congratulations to all the recipients of the Mountain Mover Award.
If y'all want to care, let me have the sheet that is in there. I'll keep those for the Mover.
I've got a beard. My boy's a beard.
At this time, Mr. Saylor, on our agenda, we have our West Urban Elementary School student presentations.
So Ms. Arvin?
I would like for the wonderful students to just take the lead, and you'll see why in just a moment.
Alright, so I am Melissa Kelly, and I, I guess you could say sponsor, but it's not even really that. Our fabulous group every day. I say I sponsor because they do all the work. I tell them that I am the adult in the room, and I am just there to supervise.
I do for the live stream, sorry.
No mercy. That was not part of the deal. I tell them that I am just there to supervise. I am there to make sure nobody gets hurt, to make sure that everything is getting done, but they are the workers. We actually have a student who also is a manager who happens to be on vacation this week, so he wasn't able to be here. He's at Disney instead. I mean, really, why would you go to Disney instead of coming to a board meeting? I mean, seriously. But anyway. But they take the lead on everything. So I am going to turn it over to them, like I do every day. They come in starting at 7:35. As soon as they walk in the door, I have students starting to show up in the mornings. They come, they work with me until about 8:10 or 8:15 each morning, and they put together the fabulous show that you are going to see. Jeremy, can you show that first instead? And that way they kind of have a point of reference to talk from.
Good morning, West Urban students and staff.
It's Thursday, April 20th.
Today's weather is sunny with a high of 83 and a low of 58.
Today's food will be having hot dog, a bun, french fries, baked beans, orange, and milk. Tomorrow's food will be having pizza, grape tomatoes, dip, corn, fruit, and milk.
Kona ice is coming to West Urban tomorrow. A small cost $3, a medium cost $5, and a large cost $7. Make sure you bring your money.
On May 5th, West Urban will have a spring play. A ticket costs $4. In advance will be $5 at the door. Cheerleading tryouts are next week. If you will be in second through fifth grade next year and want to try out, make sure you attend Open Gyms. Open Gym will be today and Monday after school until 4:30. Tryouts are Tuesday after school until 4:30.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have a good day.
How do you think you're going to prepare for the exams?
I'm going to study.
How to prepare for the exams? I am gonna get good sleep, be very hydrated, and use a shower.
Good morning, my students and staff. My name is Reed Napier, and I'll be covering Joe for the day. What kind of breakfast do Kathy? Mice Krispies. Have a good day.
Hello, I'm Adeline Leach, and today I will tell you a testing tip. Today's testing tip is to have scrap paper. Just in case you have a problem that you can't solve in your head, use scrap paper so you don't mess up. Have a great day.
...our scheduling that we do.
So in the morning, we come in, like she said, and we start working. And basically, we start recording our videos that we usually put on the news. And then the editing team, they airdrop it to the MacBooks, and we start putting them in. And then on Wednesdays, we come in in the afternoon while she doesn't have a class, and we finish up that show, whatever we need to do for the next day maybe. And basically, that's what we do. And then we, when, we usually do it all in one day, all in one morning, and that's usually what we do.
And they prepare a day in advance. So today, they were preparing for tomorrow's show.
You saw in that, we use a program called WeVideo. We take it from an Aoudapt MacBook to put in, key in, edit audio, and put it into the Quick Transformation. Um, so when WeVideo, we make sure the mics are connected to the receiver or plugged in. Then we either tell them, they get a script of either the morning show or about testing tips, like you saw, or something else like that. Um, then we either tell them like, three, two, one, or something to that source. Then we record that. Um, we airdrop it to the Macs, and then the editing team starts to edit it.
Sure, why not? Okay, yeah. Um, so when we interview students, we take a tripod and an iPad, and we put the iPad on the tripod. We make sure like the mics are working before we interview the students. And we place them like in a certain way before we interview them. And then we get someone to like record when we're interviewing.
And Casey actually is going to tell you about the music because that's his own music.
So I actually produce the music, as you heard in the video, and it's music I make at home. And we usually just airdrop it to a computer, and then they put it in for the videos. And at the end, as you heard, that was put in editing, so, yeah.
So it's actually originals. No one else has that?
Yeah.
And then Abby is actually working on a very special project for us that's upcoming, and she's going to tell you a little bit about her project.
I'm doing a kindergarten day in a life, and we're for the new kindergarteners that have like never been to school. And so that their adults know they're safe. They, we're doing what they do in a day. So we're working on it, and we're doing a voiceover, and then we're gonna do step-by-step what they do in a day.
Do y'all have any questions for them? Alright, fabulous job, guys.
So I would just like to follow up a little bit on that. What these folks do really do make a difference in our school culture, in our climate. They keep our school family informed. And just for example, I know Ms. Barnes and I were at the same Relay for Life meeting yesterday, and we were talking about ways to get word out to the community. Folks will watch videos that these students put on there because they're amazing. So there, another project that Ms. Kelly didn't mention, I just came in yesterday and said, hey, we need some, some public videos to share about the Relay for Life to make sure people know to come, why we're raising money, the importance of cancer prevention, and those kinds of things. So I'm excited to see what they do with that because all I do is give them an idea, and they run with it. And they're absolutely amazing. Ms. Eads has one other thing to share with you tonight. Ms. Burrows, excuse me.
No problem. Hello, my name is Kimberly Burrows. I am the music teacher over at West Urban Elementary. And this is my first year, not only first year in Estill County, but my first year as a teacher. And I can say so far, it has been a fantastic school year. I could not have picked a better school district. And this year, I was reached out to by a choral director from Madison County who said that they are currently trying to get their EKU Honor Choir up and running, which is where several school district choir programs come together at the EKU Center for the Arts. They practice for an entire day, a set of pre-selected choral literature. They work with an actual professor of choir at EKU, like an actual real master of their craft. They spend the entire day from morning to night practicing, and then they put on a huge concert. And she said that they would love it if our choral program would come. And I said, well, currently, we don't have a program yet, but I would be more than happy to create one. So I met with Ms. Arvin. We agreed that this would be a really great music education opportunity for our students. So I went out and recruited several, and we sent 14 of those students over to the EKU Center for the Arts. We started rehearsing every week. We met about twice a week, once with me and once with the middle school choir director, so we could really collaborate on that. And then they went over to the EKU Center for the Arts. And when I say like they practiced for a whole day, they practiced from nine in the morning to seven o'clock at night when the concert actually happens. It is a huge ask of these kids because it is insanely hard work, and it's all day long. But needless to say, they absolutely rose to the challenge. They exceeded my already high expectations. And I believe they represented their school and themselves insanely well. You're about to see one of the songs that they performed at EKU Honor Choir. It is called Be the Change. It's a beautiful song, and it features a little bit of Swahili. So that added an extra challenge is that they had to learn words from a completely different language. But like I said, they really rose up to the challenge, and I could not be more proud of them. I'm very excited to show them off.
We are very thankful for Ms. Burrows and all that she did with that group of kids. If it weren't for the fact that they were all super active and we couldn't get enough of them here to bring that sound to life, they would've been here in person.
Right.
But we are thankful, and we're thankful for the opportunities that you all provide to our students. And thank you, Ms. Burrows. I know that we have a young man that's gotta get ready for baseball.
And just as we finish up, I don't know if you need me to talk with this or not. Mr. Saylor did talk about that the board was a little maybe concerned that we weren't going to be doing enough, I don't know if that's the right word, only concerned in a good way, that maybe we wouldn't have enough for students to do. And Ms. Courtney and I, our FRC person, Ms. Barnes, put our heads together, and I wanted to share this with you. This is our latest project, and our kids seem very excited about it. These are just some things we're going to be doing this summer. And you have the information about the field trips, but Ms. Courtney and I also want to bring a book and some other learning that will go with the field trip. So it's not only about getting the kids out, keeping them active, helping them see different parts of Kentucky, but also, you know, sharing some literature, sharing some things that they might take home and practice. So I just thought you all might be interested in that, to know. I know each school is going to be doing something different, but that's where we, we went to at West. Other things, super excited about data. I am hoping that you all are going to be super excited with us next fall when we get KSA scores back. Do y'all have any questions about anything going on at West Urban? Oh, thank you. Well, we appreciate the opportunity to share some of the great things these kids are doing.
These field trips look fun. I'm not like a...
I'm super excited.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
See you, Ms. Patty.
Next on our agenda, Mr. Saylor, we have the George Washington Teacher Institute presentation.
Yeah, I don't think Mr. Brock was able to be with us tonight. So, but Mr. Brock was chosen for this program. It's called the Mount Vernon Teacher Teaching Institute. If I'm not mistaken, Ms. Charlotte O'Brien was fortunate enough to do this a few years ago. It is a very prestigious program, and it's an honor to be selected. And he'll be doing that this summer. I mean, at his own, on his own time. But, you know, it's really a in-depth study of not only George Washington, but just different activities happening around Washington DC. So we're very excited that he's able to participate in that, and we'll be presenting him with a Medal of Excellence also for his selection into that program. So that's it.
Thank you. Congratulations. Next on our agenda, we have our facilities and construction updates. First on our list is our Estill Springs Estill renovation and addition project.
Well, we've got Casey with us tonight, and Peter's here as well. And Casey, I guess, is here to give the update for Estill Springs. We had a construction meeting today. Things are going well, as you all can probably see from the road. So Casey, lead on.
Well, I wasn't prepared for that. So, well, we're right on schedule. We're running into a couple of delays with soil conditions and that sort of thing, but we're in the process of fixing. I would say by the second week of May, we'll have the classroom, you know, additions 100% complete, 18th or so, 19th. So about 20th of May, the classroom additions will be complete. And then at that same time, everything, what I'm calling the west side of the park areas, basically everything, you know, across from my job trailer and that storage building stuff where the amphitheater is and the monument and stuff, they just finished up the monument. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to go take a look at it. It actually looks, I was surprised, really good. That salvage stone that they were able to use, that salvage limestone in the brick, I mean, it really turned out great. And so I think that's going to be a big anchor point and a big, you know, big area for the community, hopefully, that they use it quite a bit. You know, we put a little bit of electric down there, so you'll be able to have, you know, some music and stuff, you know, like bands and that sort of stuff down there. And I wish I could take credit for that. That was his idea, not mine. But, you know, we're moving right along, so don't really have a lot of issues. I think we're really gonna push a lot here as soon as school's out. You know, there's a lot of stuff that we're waiting to do as far as digging up the roads and getting the paving done and all of that stuff. But, you know, I mean, yeah, we'll be done by the middle of June, no problem. You know, I mean, we may be dealing with a little bitty thing here and there, but I mean, 99.9% of the project, I'd say by the 15th, 20th of June, will be 100% complete. So.
You guys will have to approve probably the BG4s in July and close it out. And hopefully Angie and Jeremy and I will sit down this couple of weeks. I don't think we're gonna start on Monday. It's a bad way to start on Monday, since it is a Monday. But on Tuesday, we've got all the BG4s on these projects. We're gonna start closing them out. So we hope to bring you, we might not bring all of them, but we're gonna bring you a bunch of BG5s at the May Board meeting to wipe them out and get them closed out. And I think today, they talked about trying to get the blacktop and everything pretty much all wrapped up about like June 9th.
Yes.
So I really think unless something happens, we'd have a monsoon or something. We're gonna do it by the 15th.
Yeah, it was pretty much everything.
We're gonna do a lot of sod. I wanted y'all to know that it called for a lot of seed, but because of that dedication on the 23rd, we've worked with a contractor to put down a lot of sod to try to get it firmed up a lot better and try to not be dealing with any type of muddy conditions if they're happening. and try to not be dealing with any type of muddy conditions if there happened to be rain on the 23rd, so.
And I think that's a good call too, because I'd say you're gonna get a lot of foot traffic right in there and with all the slopes and swells and everything, just to be able to instantly have an established lawn is gonna be a big lifesaver, I think.
So we feel really good about that. If y'all noticed, we took a lot of the topsoil that was left over and it's went to the practice field behind the ATC. So Casey's gonna be working up there. He's been working to get the sprinklers back up. Matter of fact, Casey saved us a lot of money on our sprinkler systems and stuff, done a lot of work himself and helping us. So I did want to say that. So he'll be doing that. So I feel really good. We're definitely on track to get this done. I think substantial completion is like June 5th if everything just went perfect. So we're in great shape.
Sounds good.
No, that's it. I mean, well, I gotta get out of here too, 'cause I got-
He makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a 5-0 vote. Next on our agenda, we have consideration for approval of change order 02-05, 02-06, 02-07, 03-01, 03-02, 11-01, 11-02, 12-01, 12-02, 12-02-01, and 12-03.
As you all, if you all remember, Kenny writes these by bid packet. So this is getting us caught up. I think this gets us caught up to date, pretty much.
Yeah, Kenny likes to sit down and do a bulk of them because they're difficult to do. And so he does them kind of all at once.
I think he has to psych himself out.
I know he does. There's a lot of stuff, you've got a lot of steps with KDE.
You know, he's got to have on, you know, little jazz music and it's gotta be really soft playing and all that. But this takes in, I believe, the work that Rising Sun did to get those site finished after Cone's trucking was pulled out. As you know, the canopy bid at an excessive price during the bid time. So we came back, went with another design, and now that design's come back and it's came back, you know, within budget in order to do that. So this is part of the canopy work. It's also got to do with the sanitary line, which you all love to deal with, that is an issue with the grease trap. That school had a homemade grease trap that was installed whenever it was built. And it's not up to code. It never has been up to code. It's a mess to say the least, and that was a pretty huge change order. But I can report, as of right now, knock on wood, if nothing else happens, we're within budget. We don't have $10 left in the project, but we're within budget. We have spent the furniture money. I went ahead and I allocated some Estor funds so that we could buy some furniture for those classrooms because we have, in all honesty, we probably don't have $50 left in that project. But everything is covered. And really, right now, unless there's another issue with soil conditions as they start to put that road in for the parent, but we're sort of home free.
So I need a motion-
So we need a motion to approve all those change orders and that gets us up to date.
So do I need to go through each one of them or can we approve them as one?
You can approve them as one motion.
I don't know if you can say all them numbers again.
I know.
She did good. She did good time to time.
So I need a motion to approve the change orders as discussed. Tammy Harding makes a motion. Do I have a second? Carrie Smallwood makes a second. Do we have any discussion? With none, I'd like to call for a vote at this time. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a 5-0 vote.
And while Casey's here, before he get, he'll probably stick around with Peter. But just to go back to the high school, we have closed that project out. I think the only thing we're waiting on right now is a gate. That's gotta be installed up at baseball softball in that storage area. The gate's here, they just not installed it. And also, they are gonna hydroseed those bare grass, those bare areas across from the high school. And there's several areas that's got to be addressed. And Casey's finishing up all the sprinkler work. We've gotta get that soil spread on the practice field and get it grassed in. So we'll have grass come July for the start of fall practice. So all that stuff's done, so I don't know about it.
No, yeah, that's, I'm gonna start working on the dirt tomorrow.
Okay. Do we need Casey anymore?
We really don't need him. He might wanna hold Peter's hand for a while, but-
I like holding Peter's hand.
We'll stick around with him. Who put Peter on?
All right, so that brings us to the Estle County High School Fieldhouse restroom renovation project. Give us an update, Peter.
Update is, we're here with it complete, right? So really good news there. I do think that Anthony Patrick, the contractor, is working with Mr. Willis on a couple of issues. My understanding is those were addressed, if not yesterday, today. So we are here today with the final pay application and the BG four for this project. Be happy to answer any questions you have about it.
I met with Anthony today. We actually had lunch together. He wanted me to let the board know that he's been very appreciative for the opportunity to work in our school district and hopes that at some time in the future, he'll be able to do it again. He's been around for a long time now with some roof projects and different things that he's done for us. So he's a fantastic gentleman and he's been a pleasure to work with. So he wanted me to pass that on to you all.
Okay. Next, I need approval, a motion to approve the final pay application number four for $11,229.20. Do I have a motion? Sheila Samples makes a motion. Do I have a second? Tammy Hardy makes a second. Do we have any discussion? With none, I'd like to call for a vote at this time. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a 5-0 vote. Next on our agenda, we have consideration for approval of BG four.
And I just pulled that up for everybody to look at. When we, of course, when we started, we had to back up a little bit because we couldn't get the men's restroom done in time, if you remember. So we had to adjust the project. And then we figured out real quick, we weren't gonna be able to leave the men's restroom at the original size based on the new stadium and based on the larger crowds. So we came back and completely redid the second half of the men's restroom. You can see the total construction for that project is $242,780. That was the total construction cost at the end. And we do have that budgeted within Estor funds. And we'll be approved, we'll be working on that, as I said, this coming week. Peter, anything else?
No.
Okay. So I need a motion to approve BG four. Brian Covey makes a motion. Do I have a second? Tammy Hardy makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a 5-0 vote.
Done well.
Next on our agenda, we have the Estle County High School HVAC controls, which is BG number 22-177. We need an update.
So I'm here tonight with the final pay app and the BG four for this particular project. It's my understanding Mr. Reese is comfortable with the system and how it's working and being able to reach out to the folks who installed it. Owner training happened a little over a month ago and we have the O and M manuals available. So all of the closeout documents are in order. Be happy to answer any questions that you guys have about that one.
Anybody have any? Okay. If not, I need a motion to approve the pay application number six for $80,108.80. Is that right?
That is it.
So Sheila Samples makes a motion. Do I have a second? Brian Covey makes a second. Do we have any discussion at this time? If none, I'd like to call for a vote at this time. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a 5-0 vote. Uh, let's see. Next on our agenda, we have approval for the BG four.
And so everyone will know that the final construction cost for that project was $149,763. And of course, what that project did is it allows Mr. Reese to set the controls on that building. He is in full control of all heating and air conditioning in that building, which allows us to have energy savings that can be used for instructional programs into the future. Now, that probably is about a five to seven year payback in terms, once we get about five or seven years down the road, you've paid for that project, although it's paid for with Estor funds already. So you're already saving money in the general fund with that project. But in terms of the money we spent in five to seven years, it's been money well spent. So my recommendation, approve that BG four.
I need a motion to approve the BG four as we discussed. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Tammy Hardy makes a second. Do we have any discussion at this time? If none, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a 5-0 vote. Next on our agenda, we have the Estle County Safety and ADA Upgrades, which is BG number 23-087. Give us an update, Peter.
Okay, so we heard from the-
Approval of change order number three for jarbo construction in the total amount of $593 even. Brian Covey makes a motion. Carrie Smallwood makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If none, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on our agenda, we have consideration for approval of pay application number one with DPO invoicing for the amount of $4,432.32.
And that's for some of the materials that has-
It is, yes.
That has been-
And just some of the administrative costs of getting a project underway.
And that's been reviewed by Ross Tarrant and it's a recommendation to go ahead and make that pay.
I need a motion for approval of pay application number one with DPO invoicing for the amount of $4,432.37 as discussed. Ms. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Do I have a second? Tammy Hardy makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a 5-0 vote. Next, we have an update for district facility planning.
Peter may wanna stick around just a minute, but it's my understanding that we have a draft district facility plan that's ready to be reviewed, I think, right now by KDE. They're sort of reviewing it. Mr. Stephen Willis has led the charge on that. I know Ms. Esper has been the board representative on the facility plan. And, you know, guys, we've done $47 million worth of construction about six or seven years. But with your facility planning, those needs never stop. And I think there's over $50 million of unmet facility needs in our district. And I know that some of the big items, I know that as the board, we discussed during the reconfiguration, of course, is that Estle Springs with them having a full-size gym, I think, is one of the main items that has been discussed as part of that process. Also, there's been a lot of discussion around the middle school. And we did, as I told y'all earlier, we received a report back, you know, the middle school is safe. There's nothing that anyone needs to be worried about. But we do know there continues to be a lot of movement with floors labs in that building. So there's gonna be some options that need to be looked at in the future in terms of whether or not, or how you all proceed with that building. You've got Peter on board. He's not going anywhere. He'll be here to help lead that process. I really do think that this fall, you probably do need to authorize a study by a structural engineer on that building so that you can get an exact repair amount to repair those floors in that facility. And then based on what that structural engineer determines, could determine the future of that building. As it is right now, if nothing happens, that building is probably on slate to be replaced sometime in the mid 2030s. But we need to get that building looked at and see if there's some other options instead of just holding on to that. I don't know if Ms. Esper was part of that and Peter's part of that. I don't know if there's anything else that they want to add. But that's just sort of an update and you'll be seeing that again in May for a final draft.
Yeah, there's nothing more. There were three really good LPC meetings, a lot of great discussion. I think most of what people brought up ended up in the DFP one way or another. And it is on its way to KDE for their review, which usually takes three. Be finishing up the process once we get comments back from them.
We had great input from community members, from staff, from parents. It was a well-represented group on the Facility Planning Committee and they had a lot of great ideas. And we appreciate their time, appreciate them showing up and committing to that because it is some pretty lengthy meetings. But we appreciate that and like we shared with you, hopefully with KDE approval, we'll have a final draft at our May meeting.
And I just would say one thing about these committees. We've had several committees. When you bring these committees together, you're bringing together representatives from across the entire district. And it's really important, if you're gonna have these committees, then you need to be able to listen to what their comments are and the things that they suggest in terms of the school district because they've been elected by groups of people to represent them. So I really appreciate the work of our committees. I know there's been two longstanding committees here over the last several months that's been working on two different issues. And I'm very appreciative for the work of those committees and I know the board is as well. So that's sort of the update, but you do have to set a public hearing tonight in order for us to be able-
So we need to set a date for a public hearing for the final draft in May of 23, of 2023. So we just need to set a time. I think that's it. Is that right?
Yeah, so essentially, typically you would do this after you approve the DFP. But there is a requirement for two weeks of advertisement before the final public hearing.
And we anticipate having the board approve the DFP at their May meeting. There won't be two weeks before the 23rd of May. So we're having you do it this month.
And that way we can go ahead and get it advertised and make sure we meet the deadline. So on the, at the May meeting, you will approve the final district facility plan and then you have to have the public hearing.
Yes.
And the board has to be present at that public hearing, my understanding.
I don't, no, you have to have an officer.
You just have to have a hearing officer and we'll appoint a hearing officer. So the board doesn't have to be present, so that's fine. Been a while since I've done one, so my- So that's fine. It's been a while since I've done one, so uh, my mistake. So if you all can approve it, I think if I saw, was it? I don't know if it's five thirty? I can't remember.
Oh, typically, yeah, those are typically at five thirty. Yes, that would be great.
Five thirty is the-
And we'll make sure to get that in the advertisement.
Twenty-third?
On the twenty-third. I think that's a Tuesday night of May. The board meeting is on the eighteenth, I believe, on a Thursday night, and then the following Tuesday night will be the uh, public hearing. So if y'all are good with five thirty, uh, then I guess Ms. Esper will entertain a, entertain a motion.
Um, let me put this right here, five thirty. You know, you have to put it on your calendar right now when you're thinking about this. You forget things.
That's right.
Alright, so I need a motion to set the date for the public hearing for the final DFP draft. Sheila makes the motion. Do I have a second? Tammy Hardy makes a second. So all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a five oh vote.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate your time.
We appreciate it.
It's not going to rain tomorrow, so be at work. No rain, raining, raining on Sunday. Saturday and Sunday's raining, so.
Thank you all.
That dust out there is that thick.
Y'all are the best.
Anything I've ever seen in my life. How that dirt, it was that thick today. I was walking through and it's like, walking on the moon. I mean, that's how I had to come in and wash my pants off and my shoes and everything is a mess.
Alright, so this brings us down to our action items.
Okay, a lot of this discussion was done at the board work session last week. So you all have done seen these items and uh, so now I'm bringing them to you for your approval, so we can go ahead and start setting our staffing and moving forward uh, with some of those items. So the first one is the district staffing policy. Jeremy, if you can pull that one up real quick just so they can see again what it looks like. I didn't bring you copies again, but if you remember, this has all of the district positions located on it, and you can just thumb through, Jeremy. The ones that are in purple, those are your Esser-paid positions, and all these are reflected. And there's plenty of detail. Uh, as the new superintendent comes in, they will have all these positions outlined for them. They'll know exactly who uh, these people are, and of course, I, I hope to work with them to let them know how we sort of do our staffing policies. They may have some changes, they may do some things, but they may keep it exactly the way it is. But that is your uh, district staffing uh, um, policy, and it's my recommendation that you would approve it at this time.
I need a motion to approve the revisions to the district staffing policy as discussed. Tammy Hardy makes a motion. Sheila Samples makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If none, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a five oh vote. Next, we have our, to review our Esser-funded positions, and it's a no-action.
It's a no-action item, and of course, this again was shared with you at the last meeting, and this, of course, is the positions that they are, that have been paid out of Esser funds for the last three years. And it's also got all the positions that will be paid out of Esser for this coming year. And I did not attach the sheet, the second sheet of this because there was actual names on it, and I didn't want to identify any positions by names at this time, although we have to do that. I believe in May or June, you get a total list of all employees. It's just not time to do that. Um, on those district, those have already been paid, so uh, I, I didn't worry about those at the bottom. Those were paid in the past years, so that, that money's already been spent and those people have already been paid. So that was uh, from twenty-one and twenty-two. Uh, so thank you, Sheila. I, I'm glad you were looking at that, but that's one reason I didn't take those out. But that's just for your information, nothing has changed on that list. We have finalized, we worked on Esser again. We've been working on Esser about every week now. We got our Esser report in, our, for our uh, state reporting. Uh, of course, they'll have to do that same Esser report next year, which will be a lot more stuff. We just received five point one million dollars in reimbursements through Esser. So um, we had pretty much used our general fund, we'd used our contingency, we'd used our construction money, we used everything we had waiting on KDE to sort of give us the outlines to go ahead and move forward. Uh, now we're back, our, our uh, general fund right now, our, our, our overall bank account right now is close to seven million dollars. Cash on hand. So we're in great shape financially. Don't listen to any of these rumors out here that we're broke, we're not. You, we're, we're in great shape considering all the work we've done, so uh, that's uh, just again for your information. So item C, uh, is the next one, Ms. Esper.
Okay. Uh, item C is to consider approval for SBDM allocation request in the school staffing update.
And usually this is the high school and middle school because usually they do not generate enough staffing in order to uh, be able to offer all the programs that they do, but of course, as you all know, the, the decrease in enrollment is now moving through our middle school. And so they did not have a request this year, but the high school does have a request and you can look at that, if Jeremy, if you'll hit that real quick and pull it up for them. I think it's like three tenths of a teacher. So that means that's in a, that's above their allocation and above district staffing. Uh, and that will uh, give them their full staffing number, and then of course, at the bottom of the page, the, the nine thousand dollar request that allows our students to get dual credit classes at Morehead, and those classes are in US history and, and biology. And they supply the teachers and the materials, and for nine thousand dollars, our kids can take those two classes. That's a no-brainer. Uh, you need to go ahead and approve that, that's above and beyond their allocation, so my recommendation is to approve their SBDM request.
I need a motion to approve the SBDM request, um, as discussed. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Do I have a second? Carrie Smallwood makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote at this time. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with five oh vote. Uh, next, we have consideration for approval of ECHF staffing request.
Oh, that was it?
That was it.
It lasted twice, yeah.
Sorry.
That's good, we're going with it.
I was just reading as we go.
Good deal.
Um, sorry about that. Next, we have to review the FY twenty-four Certified Staff Position, and it's a no-action item.
Yes, and the only thing I will point out on that, there was some confusion, and I thought there was an attachment with that one, I may not have got it out there. But uh, there's no changes to that. There was some questions about our curriculum coaches. And exactly who, who pays for those coaches and is it part of any school allocation? In the past, I've always shown those coaches as being assigned to Estle Springs and West Urban, even though they're district-paid positions. Uh, and it was creating too much confusion in terms, okay, where are they supposed to be at? So I pulled them out of that listing, uh, to where they're no longer listed as at Springs or West, but they're just listed that we have three coaches. And what needs to happen in July, the superintendent needs to sit down with the principals and they need to say, this is what we need from our coaches, and then from there, they will assign their time. Those coaches are going to spend most of their time probably at Springs, West, and the middle school. Uh, doesn't mean they can't work at the high school, but most of their time's going to be spent in those three schools. So it's just an updated item. I will get Rebecca to post that so you all can see it. Later, it is, okay. You've got it. So um, I don't know, uh, it may be under something else, but uh, that's no-action item.
It's under Certified Teachers FY twenty-four final spreadsheet.
Next, we have an update on our SRO contract.
And um, the sheriff has agreed to pick up the SRO contract, and I think this is, this might be the signed copy. I know that uh, Rebecca was trying to get that signed copy back from them, so we will be working with the sheriff's department again this coming year. Hopefully, our legislature will come to their senses and they will fund the SROs that they mandated. Um, I, I don't, I still continue to not understand why you pass a law requiring schools to have something, but basically pass the bill on to the local taxpayers. And hopefully, that won't happen again because really and truthfully, we probably need to have a third SRO. And if you follow the law, you should have four SROs. So we're two SROs short, meet the law, but the law, of course, says when funding becomes available. Well, funding will become available when they give us funding, okay? So uh, that's just an update for you. We, you do have SROs for the coming school year.
Next, we have consideration for approval of our Friski FY twenty-four budget.
And this is something you pretty much do every year. Of course, the grant was last year, this is the middle part of the grant or the biennium of the grant, so uh, they're just going back and making sure the funding amount and how the money's divided among our uh, youth service centers. Uh, because uh, the money assigned to the schools does not always cover the salaries of individuals in those schools. We're under an alternate model, and Mr. Norton has worked to make sure that that has been worked out. And uh, this is just for your approval. We need your approval on these con- on this contract.
I need a motion to approve the Friski FY twenty-four budget. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Do I have a second? Tammy Hardy makes a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor? Any appr- any opposed? Motion carries with a five oh vote. Next, we have consideration for approval of our out-of-state trips. I think we have two on here for the middle school, Mr. Sailor.
Uh, that's uh, correct, and uh, of course, for insurance to cover these students while they're traveling, you have to approve it. It's a second line of approval, so it's my recommendation to approve both of those trips.
I need a motion to approve the two out-of-state middle school field trips. Um, as discussed, one is for a student council field trip, and one is for a out-of-state trip for KED Sees Aspire Middle School. I need a motion from Tammy Hardy, I have.
Yeah.
I need a second from Sheila Samples. Do we have any discussion? If not, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with five oh vote. Next, Mr. Sailor, we have um, consideration for approval of a contract with EZ ED Med for Medicaid billing and services.
Um, in the past, we've worked with KSBA. KSBA is getting out of the Medicaid business. And so when we started looking at uh, other carriers, this is the one that most school districts in the state of Kentucky use. Uh, as a matter of fact, their percent of uh, fees is less than what KSBA charged, so. And we really feel good about their programs. I think they're going to be a little bit more easy, uh, user-friendly for our staff to use.
It's called EZ.
EZ, that's right.
EZ ED.
So it should be EZR.
It's called EZ.
R, is that an R? EZR. Uh, so hopefully, that's going to be, and listen, you are, uh, I think we're ready to move. You're going to see a big influx in terms of Medicaid reimbursements to our school districts, and we really need to. Just to pay for our nurses now is a quarter of a million dollars. That's what your nurses cost in this school district. And in the past, you only had two nurses. Now we've got five nurses, including Erica. In the past, you had two nurses, including Erica, so we're paying for three additional nurses. And it's a total cost, and that doesn't include Erica of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But I really believe you're going to see a huge increase in Medicaid billing. Uh, Andrew's done a good job getting with that. Amanda had it, and we, we started, Amanda started all the process and getting everything lined out, and we've had people on trial basis, we've had one nurse, we've had our speech paths. Amanda's worked with our FMD teachers and our aides and people that can bill for services to those students. We can bill for transportation for FMD students. Uh, uh, transportation in terms of Medicaid students that need to go to doctors or whatever. There's a lot of funding avenues there, and you know, it's not like big amounts per visit, but because of the multiple visits that our nurses see those students, I think you're going to see a, additional funding there that's going to pay for your nurses in the future. So we feel good about this. My recommendation is to approve this. That's coming from the committee that meets, Angie and uh, Andrea and Amanda and Erica, they've worked hard on this. That's their recommendation, and I make it as well.
I need a motion to accrue, approve the contract with EZ ED Medical for Medicaid billing and services as discussed. I need a motion. Brian Covey makes a motion. Sheila Samples makes a second. Do we have any discussion? Um, I would just like to say that our, we worked hard to build a, a nursing program for our students, and I feel the services they provide are invaluable. Um, healthy students are um, good learners, better learners, and uh, Mr. Norton wants to keep them healthy and keep them in school, so I feel this service um, with our nurses is invaluable, so looking at avenues and ways that we can sustain that program, I think is imperative. Um, and so you all know that nursing services and keeping kids healthy is near and dear to my heart, so um, I would like to call for a motion to approve this. And so I have a first and a second, so I'd like to call for a vote. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries with a five oh vote. Alright, Mr. Sailor. We're on the wind down here.
Uh, time to pick an auditor. Uh, and Angie has worked uh, to get uh, MOAs, and I think we had three firms, and if you'll go to that, Jeremy, uh, the uh, attachment, you had three firms that actually submitted uh, bids. Uh, it's for three years. And it's taken a little bit of time, there it is. It's taken a little bit of time. It's for the next three years, the, this FY twenty-three, FY twenty-four, and FY twenty-five. And you can see, there's not a lot of difference between any of the three companies, but as Angie has checked references, she feels very comfortable with going with uh, Shad Allen uh, in Richmond for a total of thirty-eight thousand dollars over the three-year period. And uh, that was her recommendation to just go with the low bid. So that's my recommendation as well.
Okay. So I need a motion to approve a contract with Allen. Shade Allen. Shad Allen in Richmond, Kentucky for auditor services.
I'll make a motion for old Shad.
Alright. I have a first and a second for Shad. Do we have any discussion?
Do we have five?
All in favor? Any opposed? We have a five oh vote.
Five for Shad.
Alright, so next, that brings us down to our consent items.
Um, there's a bunch of these, but uh, most of them are things that you see all the time. You got your minutes, you got your treasures report. We've got our second CATS offer, which you approved the first CATS offer, but I always bring you the, for uh, each and every one of those. You got the Gear Up Grant uh, continuation, you got the Jobs for uh, America's Graduates Kentucky, and that's a continuation grant. Your NTI days, that's what item F is, that allows you to take up to ten NTI days for inclement weather. This year, we use six of those days, if I'm not mistaken. And um, we've got an agreement with Mindsize Psychological Services, they help us with testing, uh, whenever we fall a little bit behind based on caseloads. Of course, we've only had the one school psychologist now. And even though we've been trying to hire school psychologists, we've been unsuccessful so far. So that is on the table. It's time to renew our copier lease. And um, the copier lease, we currently, our copiers are six years old, if I'm not mistaken. We had them for five years and they were working so well. We just decided last year not to do it, and I said, I'm going to let somebody else do it. Well, I forgot I had to do it in the spring, so I guess it's up to me to get this uh, through, but this is on like a state MOA for five years. Jonathan Shaw has written a letter uh, which we have to send to KDE that allows you as a board to enter into this five-year contract. But it, it's, it's by far, they're, they're great service. They've been, they've given us great service in the past. I see no reason why not. Matter of fact, we not only didn't spend more money, it's pretty much the same cost for bigger and better copiers than we just had. So that's a win-win right there, so I'm going to ask you to approve that lease. Uh, this is a contract, I is a contract for an employee that works at KDE, that's an Estle County school employee, we've done that in the past. Uh, J is for our engineering program at the AT- Uh, J is for our engineering program at the ATC. They supply a base salary. We pick up the extended days. Uh, EKU is K and L. They have started doing internship programs when they've got people that are working in counseling and speech-language path, and you have to sign a MOA with them in terms of what we will provide. We have a John Deere reel, uh, reel mower, which is for Bermuda grass, and we don't have Bermuda grass anymore.
No, we do not.
We've got, we've got turf. So we're going to try to surplus that mower. We're not giving it away. I can tell you that right now. And, uh, and then the last item is a diagnostic and intervention fund grant, uh, for Estill Springs, and this is for, uh, reading program, uh, there, and they have filled out the paperwork for it. It's a $40,000 grant if they're able to get it, and it's early childhood reading, uh, is what that is. And so I'm asking you all to approve those at one, one big motion.
I need a motion to approve the consent items as discussed. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Do I have a second? Tammy Hardy makes a second. Do we have any discussion or concern? Okay, with none, I'd like to call for a vote to approve these. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries with a 5-0 vote. Next, that brings us down to the superintendent's report.
Jeremy, if you don't care on that one, click on D for me, and I just wanted to see if there was an, I, yes, I, I thought I gave that to, uh, Rebecca to put in there. Listen, I've slept a few days since then, and you all have not slept. You all have been having meetings for five and six hours at a time. I don't know why a couple of you haven't fallen asleep here tonight, but, uh, with that being said, you've got your personnel actions, you've got your enrollment update, and attendance has picked up a little bit here lately, and, uh, of course, we're getting towards testing time, and we normally see that. Guys, I'm telling you, our attendance beats the socks off of anybody around us, to be quite honest. Most school districts are sitting somewhere around 80 and 90%. Uh, like, this week, we've been at 93% most of the week. We're almost back to 91% for the year. Uh, so, uh, they've done a fantastic job, and we always said we'd like to finish at 91. I think we're gonna be able to do that. Uh, we'll see how it goes in the next few days.
Mr. Norton is gonna be commended.
Uh, he's done a good job, and, uh, uh, Ms. Isaacs would say he had a good mentor.
I agree with you. I agree with her.
So, she's also the Esser guru on budget, and Ms. Isaacs is too. I think, I drag her along with me.
I know, but I look along with Esser.
I want, you know misery deserves company, you know, and so I drag her along to those meetings as well, so. Um, but the culture and climate assessment, this was Dr. Roger Cleveland's work, and, uh, we, we really wanted to, and i- it bothers me sometimes that we've got to where we have in our state that we think public schools are trying to indoctrinate kids, and that's not what we're trying to do in no way. And it doesn't mean that, uh, there's schools and there's situations that need to be corrected, but we were always sort of fearful, but, uh, on moving forward with this work, but it's really important work, because as we look at our schools, we have a, as everybody knows, we have a poverty issue that we've had, and we've had across eastern Kentucky for years, and I'm, I'm just gonna say, we are never gonna see the success we need to see out of our students if we don't start taking poverty serious, and knowing what it is that we can do to help those students, because they don't understand. If you start talking about a trip to a museum, they have no freaking idea what a trip to a museum is. They've never been there. They don't even know most, some of them never even, believe it or not, we got kids that have never been out on the interstate before. I mean, so there's a lot of work to do around this area, and I want you all to see that report. It, it has nothing to do with all these far-left wing issues. This is about just meeting the needs of our kids, and that's what we've always tried to do. Meet the needs of our kids where they're at. So I wanted to share that report with you. I know that the schools and the principals are work, the principals and their schools are working hard to address this as part of their strategic plan that is still in this year. And then, of course, we know the Mushroom Festival's next week, the Brockin' Mineral Show is here Friday, and of course, all weekend long, be a lot of activities, big time for our community, and, uh, we're glad to be a partner with, uh, City of Irvin Mushroom Festival Committee, and, uh, we're glad to be a part of that. So that is my report.
We're offering best transportation services this year, right?
Just like we did last year, and it, really, uh, you had the bus shuttle at the high school where you can park. I think the buses start running at 10 o'clock, and then every 30 minutes, there's a shuttle into town. And, uh, the shuttles operate here at the central office. So at 10 o'clock, they're here, you know, 10:30, they leave here and go back out there. So I mean, it's a, it's on a 30-minute flip-flop, and this year, it was so successful at the high school last year, they're gonna also use West Urban, so there'll be a shuttle at West Urban starting the same time, 10 o'clock. They'll pick up, they'll come here, 10:30, they'll bring people back to West Urban. Of course, first couple rounds, you know, there's nobody coming back, but it really worked well, and what it does is keeps a lot of the cars parked out of town, and it provides more space for everybody. And I, I do think it was a fantastic idea when they came up with it, and it's worked well, so, uh, our, hopefully, our, hopefully, we'll find two drivers that's willing to do that. We've had a little bit of a hard time getting our drivers, but I think we'll find somebody that will be willing. I don't know if there's anything else for me, but that's it for my report.
Okay. Next, we have our board member forum. Do we have anything to report as a board? We have lots of spring sports that are going on, um.
Oh, I did see that, uh, Bella Rice, oh, had like a one-point-something ERA. Yeah, and she's just eighth grader, so that's really good.
Got a big future ahead of her.
So, um, I guess Ms. Arvin's here, and Ms. Mullins is here, and Ms. Napier's here. I guess your students are starting to get a little spring fever. Ready to, but your teachers are not, right?
Well, big thing, testing starts next week. Starting next Thursday, testing can begin, and schools are on different schedules. Some of them start next week. Some of them wait until the first full week of May, but testing is, uh, it's that time of year. Hazing the barn. It's time now to celebrate by taking the test and letting everybody know what hard work we've accomplished throughout the school year.
Well, we sure do appreciate all of our principals and staff and all the hard work that they put in, and I know sometimes we don't say thank you enough, but thank you, and we really appreciate everyone and all your efforts, and it does not go unnoticed, so.
Good luck to everyone.
Thank you all. Good luck, Chair Stevens.
There's Tony Garrett.
I didn't see her. I'm sorry. I didn't see you. You were so.
Now, I, I'm gonna tell you, if you remember when Dr. Stephen Prue was here, if you remember when Dr. Stephen Prue was here, one of the things he said, somebody said they were just a bus driver, and he said, you're not just a bus driver, you're an educator, so you're not just the preschool.
I didn't honestly see you back there.
And let me let you all know, Mr. Yost was on his way, and guess what? His radiator blew up. He, he was bringing his boys, as a matter of fact, and he was going home to get them, because there was, uh, something going on at EKU, and, uh, the last time I talked to him, he was, uh, getting in a tow truck to get his car pulled. So he wasn't able to make it, so, and I'm assuming Mr. Moore, he, he's throwing us over for a ballgame tonight, so he's, as they did, so.
Ms. Arvin has her teacher voice. Ms. Garrett is really, really quiet, so I didn't hear or see you back there. Alright, so if, do we have any public comments, Mr. Simpson?
You know, we did that during COVID, because the meetings were not open at that time because of, uh, COVID and, uh, everything that was going on, based on, uh, the rules that was being followed at that time under the emergency proclamation. You know, we, we pretty much video all of our board meetings, so everybody has an opportunity to watch. Everybody has an opportunity to be here, so, uh, we can continue, you guys need to discuss that, I guess, as you move forward. We can continue doing that. We'll put it out there. Uh, and if anybody does have question, if they're watching, we can do it. We didn't get it out there tonight. And so, you know, we will be video in the special call meeting tomorrow evening as well for the public.
Alright, if nothing further, I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn. I have a first from Sheila Samples, a second from Tammy Hardy. All in favor? Any opposed?